Okay. It is the sixth of one and I call this meeting to order. If you will, please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Each month we share a portion of our vision, mission, and core values. And this month is vision and mission. The vision is engaging, educating, empowering everyone every day. And the mission, the Bluefield School District engages our students in learning, educates our students in academic and life skills, empowers our students for the future, and embraces everyone's differences every day. And the next item on the agenda is for the board to hold a hearing on the proposed project. If you're interested in speaking at the hearing, please make sure you have a, you have signed in the sign-in sheet, which should include your name and address. After a presentation by the administration and its advisors, there will be an opportunity for the public to make comments about the project. At the time, we will ask that each person limit their comments to three minutes and that the topic be limited to the proposed project under the consideration. The notice of this hearing was published as legally required. And at this time, I'll ask Dr. Venderay to explain the purpose of this hearing.
So pursuant to Indiana Code 20-26-7-37, before a school corporation may spend more than $1 million to build, repair, or alter a school building that will be financed by leasur bonds, it must hold a public hearing at which explains, which explanations of the potential value of the project to the school corporation and community are given. The public hearing in consideration of these resolutions is the very beginning of the legal process. These resolutions establish the maximum financial terms for the proposed project.
Okay. And now we will hear about the process of determining and communicating the projects to the community and the needs of the project.
So a few background items. We did a facility study to see the needs of the building. And some of the things that were found were that we had some piping that carries drinking water and water throughout the building that is 43 years old with a life expectancy of 20 years. A water softener that has a life expectancy of 20 years that's 40 years old. An elevator that's at the end of its life expectancy with some obsolete parts. And a chiller, same thing at the end of its life expectancy with again, some obsolete parts. And being able to fix it also from a classroom learning standpoint, we still have chalkboards, which is kind of an antiquated, you know, usage in the classroom. So potentially upgrading those to whiteboards. We have had drainage issues in the elementary where there's glue that seeps up through some of the elementary classroom floors. And also the drainage issues that are caused in, in the playground. We have, let's see what else. Another very small portion could be providing better signage as you enter our district limits and advertising some of the great things that are, that are happening and have happened in, in Bluefield history. There's a section of the bleachers that just needs repair. It's basically one strip. We like our students getting into the games and getting routing and jumping, but that comes with some occasional repairs. Then our science labs for biology and chemistry, as some of you know, haven't been changed since any of you went to school here. So looking at doing some potential upgrades to a science lab. And then one thing that would be nice is our athletic training area and facility is accessed through a boys locker room. And so it'd be nice to add a second entry that would allow girls to enter without having to go through the boys locker room and call out that they're walking through. And then recently, a new fire marshal said that our gates that enclosed the locker room were not at code, so we had to remove them, which means our weight room is currently unsecure. And so we'd like to do something with getting some, some doors in that would allow us to keep it secure and safe as well as meet the fire marshal's code. So that's some of the scenarios and background information on some of the needs.
Okay. And now, Dr. Venderay, I'll have you introduce. Our advisors will explain how the proposed project will be financed as well as the information about the effect on a typical property taxpayer.
Yep. So we got Luke Rigman and Mike Thurber here. And you guys have seen them before as they presented at a work session and have really helped guide us through the financial steps and the financial pieces to, to really keep the tax rate steady for our, for our community. So I'll let you guys take it over.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Always good to be with you. Would you like me to stand here or somewhere else?
If you don't mind a step up in front of the table. That way I can catch you in the camera. You're in sight.
Well, thank you again for having us in. Always good to be with you. This is the portion of the project hearing where we present the financial impact of the proposed project, the costs of the project, and what the school corporation and a typical taxpayer might be looking at in terms of, in terms of cost.
Can you move to the second slide for us?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
What you see here is just a scheduling graph form of the corporation's current debt service payments. You have one bond issue outstanding. It's the 2020 bonds. And for the next several years, the annual payment on those bonds is roughly $800,000. There's a little bit of payment remaining in the year 2036, which would be the final year of repayment on the 2020 debt. Piggybacking on that going along. No, you're fine. Thank you. And this slide shows you the resulting debt service tax rate from that debt. As you can see, this year, you're at roughly 30 cents in debt service. If you did nothing in terms of future projects, what it would look like for the corporation is that in 2025, the rate would be roughly 27 cents. And then in 2026 through '34, the debt service rate would be roughly 28 cents. In '35, it drops a little bit. And then in '36, which is the final year of payment on your 2020 bonds, the rate would go down to a little less than 15 cents. So one of the goals of this project is to get the debt service tax rate stable for the next several years. And also, we have announced that we would achieve last year's debt service rate of roughly 36 cents. So the graph portion in blue represents the tax rate and the debt from the 2024 bonds. And everything below that, you've already seen in previous slides. So as you can see, if we sell bonds at the end of this year, or excuse me, by the end of this year, which we're on schedule to do, next year in 2025, we would get the debt rate back up to that 36 cent level. And it would stay there for a couple of years. And then in 2028, we believe we could produce a little tier or a cliff in the debt service rate that could allow you some room or capacity for future projects. And then the same will take place in 2036 when even with payments on the 2024 debt, your rate would naturally drop because of the 2020 bonds being retired at that point. So around maybe '34 or '35 would be a good time to, to start planning again. Because at that point, there would be capacity to put a little more on the debt service tax rate. So a few of the parameters or particular costs of the project. We have set the principal amount of the bond issue to be $3,135,000. And that is, you have expressed project needs in terms of both hard and soft construction costs of roughly $3 million. You will pay, we've budgeted the amount $135,000 for costs of issuance, which is what you would pay the, the team of professionals associated with the project, as well as paying for the credit rating, some miscellaneous costs. All of those issuance costs will, will add up to roughly $135,000 and hopefully a little bit less. We, we try to pad that budget. So we never have to, to go above it. But that's where the, the par amount of the bond issue comes from. Sorry, can you go back to that one? That's okay. So again, third item down, the proceeds that will be available for both hard and soft construction costs, roughly $3 million. The interest rates, we have estimated, will be between 2% and 6%. If you were to sell bonds today, you might be looking at 4 and 1/4%. I would say between 4 and 1/4 and perhaps up to 4 and 1/2%. We're a little ways away from a bond sale. We have to go through some more steps, go to the credit rating agency and do a little more due diligence, behind the scenes work. But we hopefully will sell bonds, you know, by the end of September, around that timeframe. And hopefully rates will not, interest rates will not increase. A decrease would be nice, but that's what you'd be looking at if we sold bonds today. The estimated interest cost is roughly $2.5 million. The final maturity on the bonds, we have January 15th of the year 2044 in mind for the final payment on this debt. Maximum annual payment, we've set at $750,000. And then the maximum rate impact, again, going back to the 2023 debt service rate of 36 cents. And then this is just an illustration of what a typical taxpayer or homeowner might pay in annual tax dollars. So as you can see, the top line here represents the home value. When we take into account deductions, credits, et cetera, the assessed value of that same home is reduced to an amount equal to what's on this line right here. And there could be a few more credits at the local level that we, that could reduce the annual taxes paid even further. But as you can see, a home value of $100,000 would result in a monthly tax impact of $1.50. If we move over to a $200,000 home value, the monthly cost on that would be $4.38. And then as we move over to the right, a home value of $400,000 would result in a monthly tax payment of $10.14. So a little bit about the timeline. Once we get through tonight's hearing, we will, we will, we will approach the rating agency to get a credit rating on the bonds. Sometime, maybe at the end of August. We'll be assigned that rating in maybe early September in time for a bond sale sometime later in the month of September. And then we could close on the bond issue. And that's when the school corporation will receive its proceeds maybe sometime in October. I'm not sure if that's what the official timeline says, but it's roughly, it's roughly that. You, the school corporation will be receiving its new assessed valuation, hopefully in August. Sometimes there's a delay on that. Could be a little later. Could be September. We hope it's August. But we do hope to have the new AV before selling bonds so we can better, we can have a better idea of just where that tax rate next year will be for you. Stealing all of Luke's thunder right now. I'm sorry, Luke. Do you, that's about all we have, I think. If, if there are any questions or if I have been unclear about anything, please let me know. And we'd be glad to entertain questions if you, if there are any.
I, where, like it said, that the max yearly payment was $750,000. So what fund does that come out of? Don't we pay those both?
Debt service fund.
Debt service fund.
That is one of the maximum financial parameters that we present to you, that we show you, that we make part of this whole process. It's a very conservative amount. It's a very conservative annual payment amount. Probably not going to be that high. But we, we estimate high for a few different reasons. One being, it wouldn't be out of the ordinary for you to get a huge jump in assessed valuation. And if that would prove to be the case, we would need to increase the annual payment on the new debt. So again, that's just a maximum parameter that's part of the whole proceedings leading up to the bond sale.
You have a question?
So on the one acre of farmland up there, how do they determine the farmland? Could it be pasture, woods? How do they determine the land?
The DLGF has set a base rate for the year 2024, and that is $2,280 per acre. Now that is subject to change. The type of land, the quality of the land. Many factors can affect the actual rate for an actual acre in the county. To be perfectly honest with you, I'm not all that well versed in how those, in the calculation of those things. But we just go by the base rate. Okay? That's not a great answer to your question. I'm sorry about that. But that's, we just use the base rate in, in calculating. For this year, it's $2,280 an acre. And that would be, you know, roughly 11 cents a month on that, on that amount.
So that 2044 date, that is just if we kept the tax rate steady, that's when we would be debt-free?
Yes.
Essentially, if we don't take on any new debt?
That is correct. If we go back to this showing, our goal is to leave, again, a small cliff starting here that allows more capacity and a bigger one starting here. But you're right, if you did nothing else, you would be debt-free in, well, after the year 2043, in January of '44.
By then, the other elevators will be taken care of.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll now open the public hearing. Remember, if you'd like to speak, please sign in on the sheet, which is located with Jessica. As I mentioned earlier, we ask that you state your name and address, limit your comments to the proposed project and financing, and keep any comments to three minutes to avoid being repetitive if possible. And can I have the sign-in sheet? Seeing nobody signed up, okay. Thank you very much. And thank you, thank you to all who participated in the hearing. We appreciate your time and interest in the projects and the future of our community. Please note, this is just the first step in the legal process. The board will continue to work with the administration and its professionals to look for efficiencies to conserve tax dollars while meeting our educational needs. All right. And continuing on with the agenda, public comments on the rest of the agenda. Do we have any?
No comments. I don't.
All right. Thank you very much. And. Well, they're down there later. Right here, right here. You don't know here or down there? Okay. I've just followed my agenda, so. Okay, routine business. Meeting minutes for the January 24th, 2024 regular session.
Motion to approve.
All right. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? And the meeting minutes for the January 24th work session. Do I have a motion to approve?
June 24th.
I'm sorry.
All motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? And do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the June 25th executive session?
I'll make a motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? And then the meeting minutes for the July 11th executive session. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Thank you. And then the treasurer's report. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion, may I approve the treasurer's report?
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? All right. Thank you. And then personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the list of personnel?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Give you the motion and.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you very much. All in favor? All right. Thank you. And there's no donations for this month? And then fundraiser request for the youth baseball camp? Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you very much. And then we have Neola Board Policy, the second reading. Is there any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion, may I approve the Neola Board Policy update?
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Then do we have, excuse me, the supplemental payment request? Are there any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? And then a corporate authorization resolution. Do I have a motion, or do I, any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I motion, may I approve to the corporate authorization resolution.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Okay. Now to the project resolutions. All right. The project resolution is required by schools planning to spend more than $1 million on a given facility or type of work. It contains the estimated hard and soft construction costs and the cost of issuance and establishes the total project cost. It also contains the estimated tax impact. Can I have a motion to, and a second, or can I have a motion to adopt the project, project resolution?
I'll make a motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. And the next resolution is a reimbursement resolution relating to the financing of the construction project. This resolution permits the school corporation to reimburse itself with from bond proceeds for any cash which it might spend on the project prior to closing on the bonds is required by federal law in order to preserve the school's corporation's ability to reimburse itself. Can I have a motion to approve the reimbursement resolution?
I move to approve.
All right. And a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? And then the next is a resolution determining needs for the project relating to the financing of the construction cost. This resolution establishes the need for the projects pursuant to the Indiana Code. And can I have a motion to approve the resolution determining needs for the project?
Make a motion to approve the need for project.
All right. And a second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? All right. Thank you very much. And then now to the superintendent's report.
Well, at this point in the, in the year, or at any point in the school year, it's extremely rare for a school district to say that they're 100% fully staffed. And so it's really a great advantage to our students, to our school, to our community to be 100% fully staffed right now. I just want to thank our administrators for their efforts to accomplish this. Mr. Dean and Mr. Riggleman and now Mr. Bradburn, just making sure that we're putting the best people in front of our students and that we're fully staffed. It's just super exciting because it's so rare at any point in a year. So, and I know a lot of schools across the country, across state and locally, are struggling with this. So two other things I was going to update you on. There's two grants I'm currently, well, there's more, but two specific grants I wanted to bring up that I'm currently working on. 21st CCLC grant. We had had that in the past and it funded a quality after-school program that included transportation, made it free for our students, had professional development, had resources and materials. We didn't qualify for it last year. We now qualify again just because they changed the qualifications. So working through that in hopes that we can provide free after-school care that has a truly educational focus as well as accomplishing homework, some relaxation time, and a service to our parents along with transportation. So putting all that back in. Then another one, the five school corporations in Green County are working together with the community foundation to try and get an extremely large Lilly grant that could potentially provide early childcare at the school or near the school in conjunction with the school. What I really want out of it is, one, to meet the need of our community because we don't have anywhere in Green County. We don't have enough childcare facilities for all those that are requesting it. But for me, as a school superintendent, what is really important to me and that I focused on throughout my portion of the grant work is I want to make sure that there's the educational value included in this. Because I'm looking at it as a vertical teaming effort to set up the best possible educational foundation for those kids that then come to us in kindergarten and all the way up. The better educational foundation they have from a vertical alignment standpoint, the better those students will perform year after year because of that great educational start. So I want to see an improvement in the education of early childhood care and more childhood, early childhood care. So that's the focus there.
All right. And is there any board member comments and items for future agendas?
Can we, is there a way we could post this on our website or something so people could see it? Or will there be more final one down the road that we could?
We can. I think every step that we go throughout this process, things will become more and more finalized. What I was wanting to do now that we're at this point is work towards a Facebook post next week of the items that we're looking at doing and kind of the rationale behind it. And a big part of that is. And a big part of that is, if we're talking about $3 million, some of the estimates that we've seen, if we're talking about the piping, nobody's ever going to see the piping, but we've all seen it's 23 years past its life expectancy. Nobody's going to see the water softener, nobody's going to see the chiller, you know, and so those are unseen things, and I think those totaled up around 1.6 million.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure we're transparent with the community and they know those things are being considered, because when we do the project, spend the money, and they can't see those items, that's going to be frustrating.
Right.
So yes, that, that was my plan, if that works.
What did, what come up on the second elevator? So we had two that were getting close, what was the other one? How close is it?
I, I don't have it right in front of me, but I could find out, let me know.
I think in your email, you said it was fine for now, they didn't have trouble finding bugs for it.
Okay, yeah, that rings a bell. Just for fun, I'll tell you, our new elevator is down again. According to the elevator company, it got struck by lightning. And the day that they said it got struck by lightning, there was no rain or any storm in Bloomfield, so.
Let's see, 1986, they don't make things like they used to with that old elevator.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments?
I'd like to take a minute, since we last met publicly, our Cardinal family's lost Shirley Hudson, and Rex and Shirley were both fixtures around here for a lot of sporting events and just really not anything within the school. So just to take a minute to think about her and Rex and what their presence around here meant. And then to end on a happy note, I'd like to congratulate one of our elementary teachers, Auntie Kish and her family on welcoming their baby.
Thank you. All right, any other comments?
The new fence looks nice. I drove through and seen it.
Awesome, well then they finished it today.
They didn't get it finished?
Well, if you're saying you drove through, because when I looked earlier this morning, it just had the frame on, so good.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and our future meetings are going to be on Thursday, August the 29th, and then also Thursday, September the 26th, at 6:00 PM here in the middle and high school media center. And this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.